Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, December 13th Lebanon City Council Meeting. Our first order of business will be the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, move on to the roll call members. Madam Currie, call the roll, please.
Mike Kincaid.
President.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Morris Jones.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Here.
John Copeland.
Here.
Brent Weet.
Here.
Sierra Messenger.
President.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. Are there any changes to those minutes?
Make the motion we approve the minutes.
We have motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion at a second. All of us here say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. These minutes are approved. All right, on to old business. First item up is ordinance 2021-26 Lebanon Standards. This ordinance is on second reading. Kevin Krulik will present this.
Thank you. I won't go into the details of this being second reading, but this is an ordinance to update our Lebanon construction standards. This is on second reading, but previously we have seen approvals on the updated standards from our Board of Public Works and Safety as well as Lebanon Utility Service Board. So they have both adopted these and so really what the ordinance does is just give these standards the weight of law essentially allows us to use the city code enforcement provisions to enforce these construction standards. And these are standards that we use not only on our own projects, but on all development projects throughout the city governing everything from utilities, water, wastewater, stormwater, road construction, all the way through street lighting, street signage, path connections. It's a pretty lengthy set. It's not drastically different than what we adopted about two years ago. We just took an opportunity to take another wholesale look at these, refine things, add some things that weren't in there like street signs, and make sure that we were making our standards as technically sound as could be. So happy to answer any questions. You might have, but for your consideration Lebanon Standards Update per Ordinance 2021-26.
Any questions for Kevin at this time on this?
No, sir.
Okay. Rob, I'll have you read the ordinance on second reading, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2021-26 again is the Lebanon Standards Ordinance for the City of Lebanon. As Mr. Krulik indicated, the City of Lebanon through the Board of Public Works has established and adopted certain standards for the design and construction of the public and private infrastructure, including the streets, utilities, drive, storm sewers, water mains, and everything that's set forth in this ordinance. The Lebanon Utility Service Board has adopted similar standards that are all listed in there. Therefore, this council finds that the foregoing recitals are adopted. The Lebanon Standards for, as approved by the Lebanon Utility Service Board on December 1st of this year, copies of which are on file at the Lebanon Utilities are hereby approved and adopted herein. Lebanon Standards for is approved by the City of Lebanon through the Board of Public Works on November 22nd of this year, copies which are on file at the Office of the City Engineer are hereby approved and adopted herein. Lebanon standards adopted by the Lebanon Utilities Service Board and the City of Lebanon are identical and herein after referred to as Lebanon standards. These Lebanon standards are to be made available to developers, engineers, land surveyors, the City of Lebanon Planning Department, City of Lebanon Engineering Department, Lebanon Utilities personnel and employees as necessary for any design and construction of streets, utilities, drives, storm sewers, and all the others that are listed herein. Any ordinance that is inconsistent with any provision of this ordinance is hereby repealed and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect in accordance with Indiana law upon passage.
Thank you, Kevin. Ordinance has been read on second reading now. Any discussions or comments now from council at this time?
No, sir.
Any public comment concerning ordinance 2021-26? I would entertain a motion at this time concerning ordinance 2021-26.
Make the motion we approve ordinance 2021-26.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. Ordinance 2021-26 is adopted unanimously. Thank you, council. Next up is ordinance 2021-25 Road Impact Fee Zone Improvement Plan. And this ordinance is also on second reading. Kevin Krulik.
Thank you very much. I'll be brief again on second reading. This is our Road Impact Fee Zone Improvement Plan on our Road Impact Fee Ordinance. So the Zone Improvement Plan was adopted by Plan Commission. Public hearings on that plan were held through the Plan Commission meeting. And now this is before you on second reading, ordinance 2021-25 adopting our Road Impact Fee Zone Improvement Plan and our Road Impact Fee Ordinance. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Kevin at this time?
No, sir.
Okay. Rob, can you please read ordinance 2021-25?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Again, ordinance 2021-25 concerns the establishment of an impact fee for the purpose of planning financing road and street infrastructure. As discussed at the first reading, this is a rather lengthy ordinance, so I'm going to hit the highlights with it. This council finds that it's reasonable and necessary to promote the orderly development of the city by establishing standards by which the city may require new development, and that's set forth in here as an impact fee. The city is caused to be prepared the Lebanon Road Impact Fee Zone Improvement Plan, the Zone Improvement Plan that was prepared by A&amp;F Engineering Company and adopted by this council in resolution 2021-30. Because of the size of the city, considering the population, the geographic area, any road or street improvement benefits all citizens of the city equally. Therefore, the purpose of this ordinance is declared expressly not to deter growth, remedy, but rather remedy existing infrastructure deficiencies or pay for maintenance or other non-capital costs. Therefore, be it resolved, and I'm going to highlight these sections. So Section 1 talks about the conditional repeal and the limitation on imposition of the impact fee. And that discusses that this ordinance shall expire and become void five years after the effective date as required by Indiana Code. The establishment of the impact zone is all set forth again in page 2, and it gets into the detail there that Kevin went through before on first reading. The establishment of the impact fee is in Section 3, and that discusses the cost per 24-hour trip within the impact zone. And again, that's set forth in Exhibit A. Section 4 discusses the credit in lieu of payment and the certain statutory exemptions that are listed on page 3 and the top of page 4. Section 5 discusses the impact fee that's due upon the issuance of a structural building permit. And again, that's all per Indiana Code. Section 6 discusses a lien of rights that are established by Indiana law. That goes into page 5. Section 7 discusses the form of receipt. Section 8 discusses how a person or individual company may appeal those provisions. Section 9 discusses a road and street thoroughfare fund that's set forth to be in compliance with Indiana Code. Section 10 discusses the use of impact fees collected pursuant to this ordinance. And as Kevin discussed at the last meeting, Section 11 discusses a Lebanon Impact Fee Review Board and all the requirements that are set forth in there and which we read in further detail at the last meeting. Section 12 discusses the serious impact fees. The effective date of the ordinance shall be effective six months after the date of its adoption by this council, and that covers this ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. The ordinance has now been read on second reading. Any additional comments or discussion from council at this time? Keith? No? Any public comment at this time?
Well, before we do take a vote, I just want to say I know this has been a long process, so I want to thank Kevin for shepherding this effort through. I do think this is a good way to ensure that development pays for itself and we're not burdening current residents for, you know, additional growth that's happening to the city. I think we've all realized that there's a lot of focus on us and a lot of interest to more people that want to live here, and I think it's a good structure for us to move forward to ensure that the development does pay for itself and we're not burdening current residents with the improvements that are needed. So with that, I would entertain a motion concerning ordinance 2021-25.
I'll make a motion we approve ordinance 2021-25, the Road Impact Fee Zone Improvement Plan on second reading.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Morris. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. Ordinance 2021-25 is adopted unanimously. Thank you, council. Okay, that concludes what I have for old business. Is there any other old business from the board? Council, excuse me. Okay, new business then. First item up is Resolution 2021-28, which is the American Rescue Plan Adoption. I will introduce this one. So as part of the American Rescue Plan, which was the program adopted by federal government, it does require us to adopt a local plan to essentially to spend any of these funds that we receive from the federal government. So as part of this plan, there is an attached Exhibit A, which essentially is our plan, which outlines essentially the introduction, the impact of implementation of, you know, how we do this. And then also it goes and specifies the proposed uses of the plan. This plan can be adopted or amended at any time in the future. So if priorities change, let's say we come back next year and some of council priorities have changed, we always can amend this plan. It is a living document. So it isn't set in stone. Once it's adopted, it can be amended throughout the time. So again, this is, you know, this kind of was been constructed based on feedback and discussions that we had going all the way back to our council budget sessions. You know, we knew this money was coming. So I tried to craft a plan that I felt like covered all the different topics we discussed as well as the different priorities, different council members brought forward as well too. So we can have a discussion about the Exhibit A if we want to go through that. We can talk through that with everyone. Or we can kind of just have Rob read it and then we can have discussions and make any proposed amendments if you guys want to do that. So at this point, I'm open to council thoughts on that, on procedure wise.
Nothing.
Yeah, I'll have Rob mind reading it real quick for us, at least the resolution, and then we can, and then we'll go through the Exhibit A as well too. At least just do the many projects.
Okay. Do you want me to read the detail or you want to?
Just highlight it.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Council. Resolution 2021-28 concerns the City of Lebanon's use of the funds provided under the American Rescue Plan or APRA. The City of Lebanon has been awarded $3,627,035.79 through the ARP funds, half of which has been distributed in 2021 and the other half will be distributed in 2022. The Indiana State Board of Accounts requires local government recipients establish the separate fund, and we discussed that a while back. On July 26, 2021, in accordance with Indiana law, this council adopted ordinance 2021-12 that established the City of Lebanon ARP Grant Fund. Prior to distributing the ARP funds for the use as permitted by ARP, this council is required to appropriate the ARP funds and approve a plan for the use and distribution of those funds. The ARP funds must be obligated and spent by the city in certain allowed expenditures pursuant to both the U.S. Department of Treasury and the Indiana State Board of Accounts. Therefore, this council adopts the attached document as Exhibit A entitled American Rescue Plan Act for Community Investment Plan for the City of Lebanon. Version 1 dated December 13, 2021 to provide details for the current use of the ARP funds. This plan, version 1, shall remain in effect until amended or supplemented in accordance with appropriation ordinances adopted by the council. This resolution shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption by the council and approval by the mayor. Exhibit A, as the mayor indicated, contains a number of specific eligible projects and use for the funds. I'll just highlight this. Reese Park Lift Station Phase 1 is ARP funds in the amount of $1,800,000. Memorial Park Lighting and ADA Playground Installation in the amount of $325,000. Big Four Trail Head Restrooms and Improvements in the amount of $300,000. Abner Longley Park Tree Clearing and Walking Trail Construction in the amount of $150,000. Stone Eater Bike Park in the amount of $500,000. Conservation Pond Fishing Pier and Abner Longley Park in the amount of $300,000. Abner Longley Park Disc Golf Redesign Installation in the amount of $30,000. Lebanon Wayfinding Signage in the amount of $75,000. And essential worker premium pay in the amount of $150,000. And those are the highlights.
Thank you. And I have the last one. Want to correct. There was a typo there that says $1,200 per employee. That actually should be $1,500. So that is an error on my part. The proposal, the $150,000 does equate to $1,500 per employee, not 1,200. So just to clarify that. So this time I would open the floor to any discussions from council. Again, this Exhibit A can be amended if you choose. We can talk through specific proposals, projects. Again, as we had our discussions and our different, you know, exercises to try to rank these different projects, I tried to take what all would fit within the proposed budget we have and along with those priorities. So that's kind of, that's, these are the result, these are proposed. But again, this is a living document at the council's will and can be amended. So go, Dick.
Just a few questions. One, this is a resolution with our plan in it, and we have to, then we will have to approve each item in the plan as we go, correct?
That is not my understanding. Once it's, the plan is approved, this is, this essentially authorizes us to move forward with it.
I understand that.
Unless there's a deviation from within the plan.
Yeah, I just thought we had to come back and approve each one, even though it was in the plan. Once we used the money, we had to come back to approve to use the money.
There may be situations, such as we have an appropriations later tonight that references some of these things, that there may be specific situations based on budget rules that may require some approval. But once all the money has been received by the city, this essentially is kind of the game plan for it. And as long as the city and the mayor's office is operating underneath these, that's how we would allocate it.
Okay. My other question is kind of a procedural question a little bit, because I just know this thing is very sticky. As Rob, as your staff who is dealing with this COVID-19 rule and orders from the treasury and everything, have you looked at all these to see if they qualify? Because I know, I do know that there's got to be some sort of qualification there that makes it based on COVID. And we don't want to put ourselves in a position that we spend money and they come back to us after they do an audit and come back to us and say, they don't think that related to COVID.
So in the Exhibit A, we do-
I just want to make sure we're okay.
Yeah, so in Exhibit A, we do kind of lay out exactly what the ARP says from those. I would say, again, that's the actual language from the bill that Congress passed. They are broad, but also specific. So there is definitely some gray area, and there have been further, I guess, clarifications submitted.
And there will be.
Yep. And so it is, they are kind of, it is a bit of a moving target from the Treasury, U.S. Treasury Department, I would say. And essentially, Tanya has kind of been briefed. A lot of her clerk treasurer discussions are happening of, you know, when we do appropriate funds, make sure we're recording kind of what the, what the proposals were at that time, kind of what the, so, but I would say generally speaking, compared to, with other discussions I've had with other mayors and other communities, these are generally in line with what other communities are doing as well too. So the tourism industry was particularly impacted by COVID, and, you know, our city, our main source of tourism at this point, until maybe we have some projects coming down the road in the future, is our parks and our recreation. So that's, that's kind of the vein where a lot of cities are taking that.
And please don't think I disagree with you. I just want to be careful because nobody, nobody knows how this thing is going to happen yet. And then nobody knows until that first person is stabbed. And also, we better check into one of the items here, because I think there's been a ruling by State Board of Accounts that has come out that affects the compensation for essential workers. State Board of Accounts has come out and made a ruling about that, and we better check into that because I don't think that is allowed. I could be wrong. I read it once and it's been a few weeks ago.
The only, Councilman Robertson, I just, as you've already seen on page 2 of Exhibit A, we set forth the certain categories that have been approved as set forth in 42 USC Code 803(c)(1). And again, those are to support the public health expenditures, as you addressed, you know, related to COVID-19, address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, replace lost public sector revenue, provide premium pay for essential workers, invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. The only thing I would just echo what the mayor said is this is new. There's not a lot that we've seen that's out there. And I think, again, this is at least intended to be the initial plan that this council would approve, and it could certainly be amended or adopted at a later date if necessary.
I just know that the State Board of Accounts is coming down against this.
I know a lot of cities and towns, they've already paid their people. I mean, it's-
I understand they have, but the State Board of Accounts is coming down against this.
They'll be here tomorrow for my audit. It starts tomorrow.
Yeah, ask them.
I can ask them.
There is a statement out there from the State Board of Accounts about this.
And they've all been paid.
I know they put parameters on it, but I do believe we are within those parameters of what is proposed at this time.
You what?
We are within the parameters. Like you couldn't, they put a maximum percentage of the overall salary that could be offered as premium pay, and we are within those proposals.
Well, State Board of Accounts is saying this doesn't qualify. That's all you need.
Again, they need to be careful. We agree, but I mean, everything, like I said, when I've had discussions with other mayors and communities, that this is, these are common practices of them, so.
That's my understanding too, but I trust that the clerk treasurer will do her due diligence. Since the fine folks from the State Board of Accounts will be here tomorrow and we'll make sure. I just wanted to say, as the council president, I think this is a pretty good list that kind of addresses a whole range of issues in the community. I was sitting here thinking, it's kind of funny. We've had a lot of discussion about this, and I don't think anybody up here got 100% of what they wanted. So it was a nice compromise that I think addresses a lot of needs across the community. So I'm sure we'll still be maybe discussing, you know, personal pet projects, but I think overall we've got a pretty good list here, and I would commend the council and the mayor for sorting this out without a lot of sideways feelings because somebody didn't get what they want.
Any additional discussion?
No, sir.
Any public comment concerning the proposed plan? Okay. I do want to correct my typo in this though. So would anybody be willing to make a motion to amend under Section 9 essential premium pay to clarify that that is $1,500 per employee and not $1,200?
I would like to make a move, I'm sorry, offer a amendment to Resolution 2021-28, subsection number 9, essential worker premium pay, change that to $1,500 per employee.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. And again, this is just a motion to amend. This isn't the actual motion to adopt the resolution.
Right.
So we have a motion to amend is, and a second. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Disposed?
Aye.
Okay. So that Exhibit A has now been amended to read $1,500 per employee, not the $1,200. Okay. All right. Now citing any other further discussion from council, I would entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2021-28.
Make the motion be approved, Resolution 2021-28.
We have a motion to approve Resolution 2021-28. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Is there a roll call request? All those here say aye.
Aye.
Disposed?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution 2021-28 is approved. Thank you, council. Okay.
Yes.
Yep, yep. Do I have consent from council to take the agenda out of order? Consent? Okay. Next up then will be ordinance 2021-27, City of Lebanon Obligation Bonds of 2022. This is for the Street Department Garage, and this ordinance is on first reading. Kevin Krulik. We also have Julie Bowling here as well too. I don't know if you wanted to go through to Julie. Go ahead, Kevin. You can introduce it and-
Okay. Yeah, just as a quick introduction, these are bonds related to the financing of the new Lebanon Street and Stormwater Department Garage to be located on Mount Zion Road, just west of the Jean Haas Center on property that the city currently owns in the Business Park. Total bond amount is, I think, my first season is $5.8 million, given, give or take. And the current project that we are focusing on is roughly about 4.2, or I'm sorry, 4.8 million in construction and including soft costs like design and inspection and project management during construction. Then there's also increases, some adds we want to put into there to make the building a little larger, a little bit out, and see what the prices come in. That adds another- That adds another $150,000 to it, so we're right around $5 million. And then the rest is, I can let Julie and Brian, if he needs to speak to this, related to fees associated with the issuance of the bonds. So, the project is out on the street. In terms of publications for bidding documents, obviously, that is all subject to financial, financial reasons.
Julie? Or Brian, I don't know who wanted to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You know, Kevin went over kind of the sizing of the project, what the ordinance before you, which we're here on first reading, does is authorizes the issuance of general obligation bonds of 2022 in an amount not to exceed $5,810,000. The final maturity of the bonds to be authorized would be no later than 20 years from their date of issuance, with a maximum rate on those bonds to be 5%. It would authorize principal and interest payments to be made semi-annually on January 1 and July 1 each year, with interest commencing July of 2022 and principal commencing July of 2023. It also authorizes that capitalized interest be funded under the bonds or the city might be using cash on hand to make those capitalized interest payments. The project amount does fall below the statutory threshold, so it will not be a controlled project under Indiana Code. Estimated sale date of the bonds would be February 8 with a closing approximately two weeks after that time. It allows for either a competitive sale or negotiated. And at this point, we anticipate it would be done competitively. But again, both are authorized. It authorizes the clerk treasurer to appoint a financial institution to act as the registrar and paying agent or for the clerk treasurer to act in that role herself. We, Krieger Valt, will be bond counsel in this and Baker Tilly will be the municipal advisor. And Brian Colton is obviously here as well to answer any questions you might have on any of the financial impacts, et cetera. The ordinance also does have additional appropriation language in there. We would be holding an additional appropriation hearing at the next reading, which is currently thought to be January 10. So we would publish the notice of a public hearing, you know, at least 10 days prior to that and hold the additional appropriation hearing at that time. So happy to answer any questions you might have on the bond financing. Brian is as well.
Any questions from council for Julie or Brian at this time?
No, sir. Will we get that ordinance before second reading? I don't, I never, I don't think I got it anymore.
Oh, you didn't? Kelly, it didn't go out?
It didn't, I didn't see it in mine.
Okay. Well, I can confirm that. We, again, we're not voting on it tonight, so we can-
Yeah, we'll just get it for the next reading, we find.
Yeah, sure. It's, see here, it's- 20 pages, a very exciting reading, just to let you know to you, Dick. So, yeah, we'll make sure you guys get a copy. Again, I thought there was, I thought you had, so I apologize for that.
Let me apologize. I do, I have found it.
Okay.
I apologize.
Okay. Yeah, I'll have Rob, if you don't mind, reading ordinance 2021-27 on first reading, please.
Yep.
In ordinance 2021-27, and I believe, again, this was in the packet, but I won't, this is a 20-page ordinance. And I know Julie went through the highlights, so I'm going to essentially address what she had by, what she said or supplemented, but just hit the categories. And again, this is for a project that, including expenses, is not going to exceed an amount of $5,810,000. Set forth on Section 1 is the determination to proceed the declaration of intent and authorization and detail the bonds. This is several pages in the ordinance. I think we get all the way, if I remember, yes, to Page 8. Then we go to the form of the bond. And again, that's several pages in there that'll address, again, what the form will look like. We get into Section 3. We'll discuss the sale of the bonds and how all that is handled. Section 4 talks about the preparation of bonds. Section 5 talks about the feasance. Section 6 talks about deposit and application of the bond proceeds. Surplus to the bond payment fund. Section 7 talks about the covenant to levy tax, the bond payment fund. Section 8 talks about the tax covenants and representations. That's set forth on Page 15. Page 17, again, discusses the continuing disclosure, debt limit not exceeded, as Julie indicated, the additional appropriations. Section, Section 11, as Julie discussed, and Section 12, 13, and 14 just talk about various repeal and amendments to the ordinance. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption and procedures that would be required by Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. All right, so ordinance 20, 20, excuse me, ordinance 2021-27 has been written out right on first reading. Any further discussion, comments from council?
No, sir.
Any public comments this time? Okay, we will take that up at our next meeting, again, January 10 at 7:15 PM. Okay, I will return to our agenda as previously proposed. Next up will be Resolution 2021-25. This is a resolution of the common council of City of Lebanon for an additional appropriation. Again, this is similar. John, if you want to come forward, that's fine. So this is related to the resolution we just passed with the American Rescue Plan. Essentially, is we have some work that we want to accomplish over this winter. And in order to do that, we have to do some additional appropriation to essentially allow us to begin that work the rest of this month. So, John, I'll tell you or turn over to you to kind of have you talk about what the plan for that is.
Yeah, looking at the projects that I'd like to complete, that I would ask the council for their approval for funding, would be our Memorial Park lighting. That project, our all-inclusive playground, also for the pool expansion engineering, along with the trees, Trees R Us for their service to clean up the conservation pond, all the, the clearing of that of invasive species and getting that ready for our trail to pass through that area. And that's basically what I am asking for.
Hey, John, to clarify, the, the pool expansion is not-
That is not-
That is not part of this. Just a, so it's the park lighting, the playground, and the tree clearing. So only what is in the American Rescue Plan proposal.
Great question. Okay.
So, Rob, can you please read Resolution 2021-25?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor, council. Resolution 2021-25 is for an additional appropriation that's set, is to appropriate funds for park lighting, playground, equipment, and tree clearing. The additional sums of money are appropriated out of Fund 176 for the purpose specified herein in the amount of $600,000.
And to clarify, too, that one, that Fund 176 is the American Rescue Plan fund. So that $1.8 million we received this summer, that's the fund that's in. So essentially, we're just using a portion of it essentially in 2021, if that makes sense.
Mayor, can I ask a point of clarification?
Yep, absolutely.
Does this need to include, it just says park lighting, that's fairly generic. Is, do we need to include actually Memorial Park?
Yes, it is park lighting for Memorial Park.
We can make that amendment, absolutely. Yep.
I mean, it, it doesn't say that it's Memorial Park anywhere in the resolution. Unless I'm missing it.
The only park lighting that's propos, or that's considered in the actual American Rescue Plan, plan, we just, sorry, I hate that they edit it in plan. The plan we just adopted only contemplates lighting in Memorial Park. So that's, it kind of solves that because we can't, because we can't use those monies on that things that aren't in that-
Well, what I'm saying is, as, as he's, he's talking, he's saying Memorial Park, and I'm looking at Memorial Park's back there, so I don't want that to be confusing.
And I think that point's fair. And like I said, we can, we can make, we can make an amendment that clarifies it's park lighting in Memorial Park, if that'd make you, to clarify it for everybody, that'd be fine. Any additional comments, discussion?
No, sir.
This is, this is an additional appropriation, so there's a public hearing on this resolution. So this time I will open the public hearing on Resolution 2021-25. If you have any public comment, please step forward and state your name for the record as well. sudden movements? Okay, I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2021-25. Any further discussion or a motion to amend the resolution? Councilman Jones, do you want to make a motion to amend?
I'm left, propose a motion to amend this to include specific wording to indicate Memorial Park.
So in Section 1, would you consent to a, or it reads, Resolution 2021-25 is to appropriate funds for park lighting adding in Memorial Park, playground, equipment, and tree clearing? Is acceptable? Okay, so we have a motion to amend Resolution 2021-25. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second to amend. All in favor of the amendment? Say aye?
Aye.
Disposed? Okay, that amendment is adopted. At this time then, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2021-25 as amended.
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution 2021-25 as amended.
Okay, we have motions, there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Disposed? That resolution is adopted. Thank you, council. Okay, next up is the City of Lebanon and Lebanon Utilities Agreement concerning the Reese Park Lift Station. Essentially, this was a, and I'm going to look at Aaron, this was a resolution adopted by the utility board as well. Yep, so, oh, yeah, oh, sorry, I didn't see it there, too. So this was a resolution adopted by the utility board that essentially, as we adopted earlier under our plan, the Reese Park Lift Station was a important project for the city as part of the wastewater and water infrastructure section of the American Rescue Plan. Essentially, this lays out how we work through the reimbursement agreement between the city and the utilities with those funds. So this time I'll have Rob read the agreement and then we can have discussion about that if there's any questions on that.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This reimbursement agreement is between the City of Lebanon and the Lebanon Utilities for the Reese Park Lift Station. The City of Lebanon desires to support the utility, improving the system, the utility. And I guess I should, Lebanon Utilities is herein defined as utility, desires to improve its wastewater treatment system servicing residences and businesses within the City of Lebanon. The utility and the city believe it's in the best interests of the city to expand the Reese Park Lift Station and the related facilities. That's defined as the current project. The project will benefit the current rate payers and support economic development within Lebanon by improving the overall operation of the system, including but not limited to resolving up to seven sanitary sewer overflows within the city. It is mutually agreed and understood by both parties that the utility will timely design, bid, contract, permit, inspect, and oversee the construction of the project. The total project cost is estimated to be $3,750,000. The city by this council has approved the expenditure of $1,800,000 in to be received American Rescue Funds to contribute towards the project. The utility will comply with all applicable statutory requirements related to the design and the construction of the project through an anticipated guaranteed savings contract. The utility upon receipt of a third-party invoice for work related to the project will pay the same thereafter. It will make a written itemized request for reimbursement from the city up to $1,800,000.
So that is the proposed agreement between the utilities and the city. Are there any questions or concerns from the council?
No, sir.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to a, to approve the agreement.
I move, we approve the reimbursement agreement between the City of Lebanon and Lebanon Utilities regarding the Reese Park Lift Station.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. And thank you, Ed, and thank you, utilities. I know you guys have already been kind of working that project already and I appreciate that's going to be expedited. I did hear we had trouble in that area this last weekend with leaves and all that stuff, so it's good that this one's moving forward. So, thank you, guys. Okay. Next up, Resolution 2021-32, Ken's Foods Land Exchange Regional Detention. And Kevin, this is yours.
Thank you. This is, this is actually something we've been working on with the, the fine people at Ken's Foods for, getting close to a year now. So they recently purchased land south of them, which would also be south and adjacent to our regional detention system. There is about 15 acres. It's a, it's a large triangular-shaped piece of property. And there's about 15 acres that is in the floodplain that is immediately adjacent to where we have already started construction of our regional detention basin. Because of other, other projects that we will discuss later tonight with the land swap, with the new coal development, we need to reconfigure the shape of our pond and find a way to add 15 more acres. This is, the reason of that being is that we had, when we had bought the original 25 acres for the pond and we built Phase 1, there was a second purchase that we were to make at some point in the future, or had envisioned making some point in the future further north, of another 15 acres. Well, before we were able to execute those options on that 15 acres, the people that developed the new coal property came in and purchased that from the Revel Farms family. So what they did then was to offer to swap us land to square off and make their property all contiguous and all rectangular in shape. But we still needed to find a way to buy another 15 acres to construct a 40-acre pond that we will need someday. So the opportunity came to look at the land in the south. It was recently purchased by Ken's Foods and, as I said, also adjacent to the regional detention system, also in the floodplain, so it is not property that Ken's Foods can develop and build on at any point in the future. But it makes for good property for the city. So we endeavored to go into, to get two appraisals that were completed back in March of this 15-acre, 15.23-acre parcel. We received two appraisals. One had a, a total of $230,000 or roughly $15,101 per acre. And the other one was a little bit less expensive, at $128,850, for a total of $8,460 per acre. Sorry, I know I'm throwing out a lot of numbers here, but essentially, what this, what this does is, we went to, we went to the, we went to Ken's and said, we can pay the average of two appraisals, which totals at $11,730 per acre. They paid significantly more than that, in the ballpark of $30,000 an acre. But after negotiations in the IAN, and point out to the fact that they cannot really build on this property, they are willing to sell at our appraised value at $11,730 per acre. 15 acres, roughly a total of $176,000. This would allow us to get the property for the detention pond back to 40 acres. This is not a new purchase. This is not, you know, this, well, it is a new purchase, excuse me, but this is not expanding the detention system beyond what it was originally supposed to be. We bought 25 acres. We're supposed to buy 15 from Revel. That was sold to the new coal property. So we're looking at replacing that 15 acres with 15 acres from Ken's Foods. And they are willing to sell at that reduced price if we can enter into an agreement that would say at some point in the future, the city will do our best efforts to consider tax incentives associated with that expansion that they might have as they grow onto the property that they bought. So tonight is just a resolution that would allow us to enter into an agreement with Ken's Foods, subject to legal review, of course, but for the purchase of 15.25 acres at a, at a, at a rate of $11,730 per acre, totaling approximately $176,000. That's a lot of stuff to throw at you, I realize. Where can I help clarify this?
We, we didn't get the resolution. We, we didn't get the resolution.
We don't have it.
Yeah, you never sent the resolution out for it.
Oh, I guess I received it with the agenda, I don't know what happened there. No one received it?
Nope.
I have 2021, that's...
Nope.
...on air, um, this is actually, this first one out is 31, but it should be 32, so...
I, I think, yeah, that was the confusion on that.
Yeah, that's a good point, I forgot that, that it did go out mislabeled as 31.
Wait, do you, was it attached to the original group?
It, I believe so.
That was my understanding, yeah.
Well, in the original group, I have 13 items, but none of them's that.
Okay.
Okay. Well, if you haven't received it, I mean, I know Ken's wants to move on this, but, I mean, it's not gonna, it's not into the world if we don't move until January, right? Is that fair to say?
Absolutely fine, my apologies, I, I thought that was delivered with the agendas.
Sorry, it was pretty hectic on Friday, there's, as you can see, we had a lot of stuff on the agenda tonight, so, we apologize for any oversight on that. So, we can just hold on this then, so, would entertain a motion to table, actually, let's have, let's finish our discussion on this.
Absolutely.
Are there any questions for that? I mean, essentially, we're essentially buying, the reason councils, because it would actually be stormwater purchasing the land, but there is a land swap component of this too, which is owned by the city, which is why this council is...
The land swap is sort of separate with New Cold, and we're gonna have discussions the next agenda item. To, I guess, to, to really try to sum it up, without throwing all the numbers at you, originally, we envisioned buying 40 acres for a regional detention system. We bought 25, we were supposed to buy 15 more in the future, we had envisioned it to be 15 acres to the north of the existing pond. That land was, in the meantime, sold to New Cold. There's a separate New Cold's property swap that we'll talk about under a separate cover, but we still need that additional 15 acres to get us back to 40. So, we've approached Ken's Foods about buying 15 acres from them, they have agreed to sell to us at a reduced price based on our appraisals, subject to us entering into a good-faith agreement to offer them tax incentives in the future, when they expand and make new investments on their property.
So, so essentially, this resolution just essentially codifies that when they go to expand, we will take their essentially assistance with the purchase of the land into consideration for us.
And that, and that consideration with total of roughly another 260,000 dollars is the gap. So, big picture idea, you know, if Ken's puts another 30 million dollars into their site, to say we have to make a good-faith effort to offer them a 260,000 dollar tax incentive, that's relatively insignificant, given the amount of investment that they've made, and that they will make in the future when they expand. There is no target for when they will expand, when they will make this request, and of course, this is a good-faith effort, it is not a binding effort, but it is something that they would like us to at least have a...
We're just, we're just, we're just publicly acknowledging that they, they're doing us a favor, and when the opportunity arises, we'll repay that, essentially.
Is there a deadline on these appraisals?
Um, I would defer to Rob on that, I mean, our appraisals were dated back in March of 2021.
Of that long?
Usually, they're good for a year, aren't they?
Whether or not we act on it tonight or January, I don't think it's gonna be material in that regard.
Do you have the resolution?
I have a, a copy of it. I'd like to say that I can affirm, I could show Kevin this to make sure it's the exact copy, this is the, what I have, it's pretty thick with exhibits.
But the actual resolution itself is...
The resolution, no, the resolution is only, yep, the appraisals, and then I have the...
We got the appraisals.
Okay.
Oh, so you got the appraisals, but you didn't get the resolution?
I got two appraisals and some other things.
Oh, was it? Okay. Okay. I, I mean, again, it's not a complicated resolution, if you, if you're comfortable, I mean, Rob can read it word for word, but if you'd rather, we'd see it...
And this goes to Rob, if you don't mind. How do you legally, what are we, when you, are we writing that in there that we're giving a good-faith, what do you do with that? Are we gonna put that in there, a good-faith effort, or is that just something that'll be discussed at the time?
Well, Councilman Jones, that's a great question, that we've had a number of discussions about. I think I, I can go through the resolution. The intent, I believe, as I understand from the mayor and Mr. Krulik, is that we would enter into a non-binding MOU, essentially memorandum of understanding, that would essentially say that the, set forth what, what has happened, just like we would in any type of non-binding agreement, and say that the city would use good-faith efforts to take these into consideration as, and I would just say, maybe say as allowed by the city and Indiana law, what's in effect, something to, to that.
You're essentially gonna state the context.
Correct, yeah, we're, I mean, we're essentially acknowledging that Ken's Foods is working with us, right, and is accepting a price that they're not, that they wouldn't have wanted to sell for, but they understand, that they understand, you know, they, they want a future here in Lebanon, they want to be good partners with us. So, we're essentially publicly acknowledging that, and, you know, I'm assuming when they, when it comes time to expand, again, we'll negotiate that, just like we always do with, with every other economic development deal, and that's something I'll, I'll keep in mind if I'm the mayor, when they, you know, choose to expand. Now, if there's another mayor that chooses to expand, I'm sure they'll hold this resolution and say, "Hey, remember, we had a, we had a agreement here," right, and they'd hope we would uphold that. But again, yeah, it is not a binding agreement, but it is, I think, a good show of good faith in our part to adopt this resolution to say, "We acknowledge what's happening here."
And I, I guess, Mayor and council, if I could, I just want to make a, a point of clarification, the memorandum of understanding is not referenced at all in this resolution 20, or 2021-32. It would not be conditional at all, this resolution would not be conditional at all upon a MOU. It's, it's rather the flip of it, if you will. So, the MOU had just set forth, "Hey, this is what has gone on, the city entered into this resolution," and it would just take it into account on a non-binding basis, so...
Thank you.
Does that make sense? Is it councils wish to hold this till January?
I, I would make a motion that we table resolution 2021-32 till the next meeting.
Yep. We have a motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed? Okay, that has been tabled, and we'll take that up at our next meeting. You touched on New Cold a little bit, Kevin, do you need to go into that more, or is that...
Um, I can't, this item is just for discussion, this will be formal actions later, I did touch on it.
Let's, I, we've kind of mentioned it, but like, let's go, since we're gonna actually be voting on the Ken's Foods ones next time, we'll kind of have that discussion then, because they are, they are kind of interrelated, so we'll just skip that for this meeting then too, so. That includes what I have for new business, is there anything from council?
No, sir.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion concerning the claims.
Make a motion, we pay the claims.
We have a motion to pay the claims, there a second?
Second.
Second from Dick, or, John, maybe, I don't hear, sorry, motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed? Claims are approved. And before we adjourn, I want to thank the council for all the hard work this year. I know it's been, kind of still up and down, a lot of uncertainties with this pandemic, but I appreciate all the hard work everyone's put in this year. I really think our city is continuing to move forward on maybe a faster path than maybe any of us ever expected, but I appreciate the, the willingness, and, you know, we don't always agree on everything, but I think we all do a good job of working together to find common ground and, and do our best for our, our whole community, so I appreciate the, the continued efforts and hard work. And so, I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Same to everyone watching at home as well, and look forward to our continued hard work in 2022, so, John, you want to say something?
I do have a question. At our last meeting, Kevin, you brought up that we might have to have another short meeting or get together before the end of the year, is that correct? And if it is, is there a date and time that you had in mind?
That, that meeting will only require, that action will only require a board of works meeting, so, at the previous meetings earlier tonight, we coordinated a board of works meeting for Thursday, 16th, at 3:00 p.m., and that's just to issue notices of award for bid openings that took place for our annual supply bids and our street resurfacing programs.
So, we did get all of our 2021 work accomplished tonight, so...
Thank you.
Okay, with that then, any final discussion announcements from the council?
I just wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
All right, with that, would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed? All right, we will see you January 10th, 2022, at 7:15 p.m. Thanks for watching.